Okay, Council, any questions on agenda items? You'd heat up your mics if you don't want them on. No questions on agenda? Any councilor concerns from anyone? No concerns? Okay, sounds good. Why don't we jump right in then to our work session items, starting with electric vehicle charging hub?
Okay, yes, thank you Mayor and good evening Members Council. My name is Eric Underwood and I am the new Local Government Affairs Manager for PGE covering Clackamas County. This is a new role for me. I've been on the public sector side for about 18 years now, and so this is brand-new, but happy to be here tonight. We would like to thank you for being our partners over the years and working hard toward a clean energy future. And on that note, we are excited to be here tonight to present a project proposal to you regarding electronic vehicle charging stations that we're proposing to implement at the library parking facility. This topic came to the Library Board back in October, at which time they ultimately recommended that we bring this to the City Council, and I think it was just recently approved by the Library Board, which is great news for us, but we'd like to present here to you tonight. We have a few slides that we'd like to run through, and at the end of that, we'd like to open it up for dialogue and answer any questions you might have. And on that note, I brought a couple of partners in crime with me tonight, Arianna Loef and Joe Colette, who are the real experts behind this project, and I'm going to turn it over to them to let them walk through the slides with you.
Thanks for the introduction. Joe Colette with Portland General Electric, and this is my colleague Arianna Loef. And we appreciate the time tonight to talk a little bit about our project. Got a few slides to share with you, and then we'll be leaving plenty of time for dialogue and questions. So we'll begin our presentation, we'll move to the next slide here. Thank you.
Thank you. So really quick for our agenda, just so you understand how our deck is laid out for you. We'll give you a brief background on the electric avenue. We'll discuss cost and timeline, along with our siting criteria, which is how we landed at the library site. We'll go through our proposed site design, which also has some more information about the equipment and pricing, and then again, we'll leave it open to question and answers, so we can have some time for that.
All right, so we'll start off with a bit of background here. What is an electric avenue? And these are community charging hubs for electric vehicles, and really the best kind of comparison to a traditional gasoline-powered vehicle would be to say that this is a gas station for EVs. These stations are designed to refill vehicle batteries in 30 to 60 minutes, and so that's much more quick than what drivers would experience when they plug in at home or at other lower-power charging stations. And our sites are also designed to serve all vehicle makes and models, and offer both high-power and low-power charging. The inspiration for these sites comes from our pilot location that was installed in 2015 in downtown Portland in front of our headquarters building on Southwest Salmon. And this location, shown here on the slide, we're really proud of and learned a lot from its highly utilized. We see an average of 40 charging sessions a day. It's powered by our Clean Wind Program, so all of the energy delivered to the electric vehicles is carbon-free. We've been able to avoid 500, over 500 metric tons of CO2 over the two years that it's been operational. And because of its success, we went in front of the Oregon Public Utility Commission and proposed to build six more throughout our service area. And we've begun that process. We've identified and begun construction in locations in Milwaukee, in Hillsborough, as well as East Portland, and we're here tonight to talk about what would be the fourth new site in our network in Wilsonville. And I think another thing I'd like to emphasize on the slide is that the community charging hub can act as a great resource for members of the community while they're here in Wilsonville, but they'll also be part of and able to use a network that will be expanding throughout our service area. So it's a value for when they're here and as they travel about the Portland metro area.
So timeline and costs, as Joe mentioned, we have received approval from the Utility Commission to build up to six electric avenue locations. We will have those deployed by the end of the year, perhaps in early 2020, but we really want them done the end of 2019. PGE will design, build, own, and operate the machines, the sites, for 10 years. All of the costs will be paid by PGE, and so we're really requesting permission to occupy the space, to utilize the parking stalls that we've identified at the library. And then what happens after the end of 10 years, we have very flexible end-of-life provisions. We could talk about extending the program, or if need be, we could come in and remove the equipment. We're really open to having a conversation in that space. So our siting criteria, this was developed in the program and based off of a number of learnings we have from some equipment that we already have out in the communities. So the library really fits many of these criterias for us. The visibility is fantastic, the amenities around it, accessibility, distribution to our grid, all of that is fantastic, and then also serving underserved communities, or what we like to also call, another group is called Home Charge Challenge, which are folks that live in multifamily dwellings that may not have access to a driveway, or a garage, or some way to charge. This could fill that void for them and allow them to move from a gas vehicle to an electric vehicle.
So this was the design we put together some months ago, working with our engineering consultants, and there's a couple of things that will be different about any final design for this location, but I think it's a good conversation starter to kind of show what a footprint might look like and which part of the parking lot we're interested in at the Wilsonville Public Library. That's the back, the strip paralleling Wilsonville Road and the back parking lot of Wilsonville Library. We are seeking access to that entire strip for the electric vehicle charging stalls and potentially some of the supporting equipment. What's important to note, but not shown in this design, is that we will have an ADA-designated stall, so that all members of the community will have access to this infrastructure. And we also got really helpful feedback from the Library Board when we met with them earlier, and we'll be modifying the design to move the supporting infrastructure closer to the building and potentially into some of the landscaped area, freeing up more parking stalls for electric vehicle charging and leading to what we believe will be a better, more aesthetically pleasing site design. These are some renderings of what the charging stations will look like. We actually got to see these in person for the first time last week at the Milwaukee location, we're really excited. You'll notice that they're a little bit different than what was shown in the photograph of our pilot location, and that's because these are the latest and greatest. The DC fast chargers on the left will be the higher-powered charging stations, the ones capable of recharging electric vehicles in 30 to 60 minutes. These new stations have an improved user interface, a touchscreen, easier cables to handle and manage than some of the older machines that were shown in the photograph of our pilot location. Another nice feature of them is that we're looking to be at this location for 10 years, and these machines are field-upgradable, so as vehicle battery technology changes, we can update and improve our machines so that they can provide power at higher levels, and so they stay relevant and useful for that 10-year project life. On the right-hand side, we have the Level 2 stations. These are the stations that all electric vehicles can plug into, no matter if you're plug-in hybrid, or if you weren't equipped with a fast-charge connector. So that's kind of a component of our site that ensures that it's accessible to every electric vehicle driver in the community. And I want to take just a moment to go over typical operation of these stations, and I think it kind of helps provide some context for conversation or questions related to safety of the machines. Nothing on, none of the connectors on these machines or cables are live or electrically powered until someone has initiated a charging session on the machine, so scanned a credit card, until they've plugged in the vehicle, and then until the vehicle is actually talking to the machine, there's a communication connection. And anytime that communication connection is severed or not present, that machine and that cable, I should say, is not energized. So I just, that little bit of context kind of helps think through the operation of these machines. It's very different than just an outlet or plug in a household where it's always live and you plug in. So I just thought I'd point out that functionality on both machines as well. The last thing we'll touch on here is pricing. We do charge a fee at these machines. We've had this pricing scheme implemented at our pilot location for about a year and seen it be successful. We did a lot of research and analysis before that to inform how this was structured. It's a bit of a change for customers as they fuel, or for drivers as they fuel their vehicles. They're used to thinking in terms of dollars per gallon, and we've got some new units and some new energy nomenclature to use here, and so to kind of aid in that transition, we charge just a flat fee at our machines. So if you use a slower charging machine, a Level 2 station, $3 flat fee. If you use a fast charger, $5 flat fee. What I think is really a great value for electric vehicle drivers for the community is a $25 a month unlimited fueling pass, so you can come and use any of the machines as many times as you'd like. The one thing we do want to point out is that all machines are subject to a, to peak pricing, and this was done to ensure that we send a pricing signal to drivers that says from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM is actually some of the most expensive time for us to deliver energy to our customers, that the grid is most congested, and we don't want it to be cost-prohibitive to charge, but we do want to send that signal that says, hey, these hours, if you don't need to charge or complain your day differently, would benefit you to do so. On average, our customers consume about 10 kilowatt-hours of energy, so let's say they're fast-charging, we're only adding $1.90 to that session, so instead of that $5, you'd walk away for about $7. So again, not meant to be cost prohibitive, but still important to send that pricing signal. That is our presentation. I hope we provided a good background and we're excited to hear any questions.
Oh, thank you. Council, questions, perspectives? Councilor Leahy?
Yes, so on your unlimited $25 one, is, do you have a limit of how many of those are sold?
No.
Nope.
So you don't foresee there being a problem with access if, you know, if you, in other words, if you sold 500 of those, would there, what would be your chances of getting on at anything besides 3 o'clock in the morning?
That's a great question. I think, should we see utilization at levels like that, which I would love to see that future, we would need to readjust the pricing, and there's some technology that the machines are capable of that allow for queuing and reservations, should that need to be implemented. You know, thus far, we're not seeing those kinds of issues, even at our most highly-utilized site downtown. There are hours of the day where all stalls are full, but usually customers are able to come back and find a session. But that's a great point. Looking in the future, yes, we would reevaluate our pricing scheme to make sure it's able to be used.
Councilor West?
So I drive an electric car, I drove it here. And my spouse works in wind energy at Avon Grid, so this is really fascinating. I have a couple of questions. One thing that I run into as a car that needs to be charged, for example, I go to Bridgeport and there's a large truck, you know, parked there that's obviously not, and it just takes up that spot, and so often, like, you don't have access, which was Councilor Leahy's concern because you can't even park your car there. And I don't, you had a map of the layout, and I was wondering for that ADA spot, actually, how far away is that from the door of the library? Are we giving them access across the parking lot, which isn't really, still, there's a distance issue for people with disabilities, and I don't know if that's been addressed. And then, how do we make sure, or what is, how do you guys deal with that issue where people can't park? And my third question is, I'm sorry, I have three questions, is what makes Wilsonville one of your prime locations, considering that we live in probably one of the greenest states in the Union, and Portland being one of the greenest cities in the Union? What makes Wilsonville specifically one of your, I'm sure there's potentially a lot of competition for sites like this, on your guys' radar as an initial city to benefit from this? And I'll hear from those, yeah, those questions, yeah.
So first one we'll address is the challenge of parking, right?
Yeah.
So as Joe mentioned, there are ways, if it's another EV, to help motivate people to move. Those are called idling fees, where, you know, you get a 10-minute warning, and then after that, you're paying by the minute while your car sits there. It's a motivator to help good behavior. The gas cars parking in EV spots is a challenge. Like, if, you know, people park into, you know, an ADA spot that they're not supposed to be. What we've found so far is people are really good about self-managing that, but, you know, we'd also, you know, be able to, you know, want to work with the city in a way to enforce parking rules.
Is there precedence for them being ticketed?
Yes.
Yes, so Delora Kruber, Public Works Director, one of the things that we'll be talking about internally is with our code enforcement officer, if we find that that is problematic. I believe the acronym is ICE, right? Internal Combustion Engine, you've been ICEd. They show up, they park in a spot that is meant for an electric vehicle. So we are aware of that, and we're hoping that people will comply, but if they don't, we will find ways to help motivate them.
Your second question was around ADA location in comparison to the front?
To the front door, AC access still to the front door.
You scroll back to the, sure, so we go to the design.
When I was thinking of that question, we flipped slides.
Sorry, yeah, no, no, no.
So where number one slot is, and then just south of this drawing is where the entrance is, down there by where the hand is.
Yeah.
Do we have any parking challenges at the library as it is? Are we taking parking spots away when, if it's already short, do we have plenty to designate already?
So at the, for the library patrons, no. What we do find in the summer, a fair number of people will park in the library lot to use the water feature across, or in the park across the street.
And we discussed that as well with the Library Board, and they felt that there was adequate parking to accommodate this. And then the last one is why Wilsonville?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, so we've been looking throughout our service area, throughout, our service area goes greater Portland on down to Salem, and evaluating sites based on a variety of criteria. The things we like about Wilsonville and this location are the access to amenities, and this is actually a unique location where we get the opportunity to co-locate with something like a library, like a city park, very unique compared to our other locations, and something that really spoke to us when looking for sites. There's fantastic visibility from the road at this location. It's very important to us that this equipment is seen, so if you're an electric vehicle, if you're a driver of any type of vehicle and you're considering an electric vehicle, just knowing that this infrastructure exists, we're asking people for the first time to think about how to fuel their vehicles. You go and buy your new car, you're not thinking about where the nearest gas station is, you're interested in your car and you're going to drive it home, and so the visibility of this location, just knowing that drivers can see it and know that this infrastructure will be in the community, was very important. And then there's access, there's proximity to I-5, as well as proximity to a number of multifamily housing developments, and so for us, it just kind of came together and met all these criteria in a unique way that we're really excited about.
Councilor Stevens?
So I was at the first October meeting at the Library Board, and there, myself and another board member, both have electric cars too, so there was a lot of enthusiasm at that meeting. There was concern after the two of you left about losing those spaces, but I think Pat's in the audience, is 160 spaces?
Around 120.
120, 120 spaces at the library, and then, but it does get pressure in the summer because of the park, but people do park there after Marassi fills up, and then they also park over where Gee's Bank is too, and just make their way over. So parking in that area, there's plenty, you might just have to walk a little longer, but if you're walking to a park, and you're walking to a water feature, and, you know, and it's well, you know, it's a safe intersection with, you know, walk and don't walk, and lots of visibility, there's not a lot of, so even walking with a family, kids over there, it's safe. So that was a concern of the Library Board at the October meeting. We talked about it last night again, they met last night, and one thing that came up was when you said PGE was going to pay for everything, one person asked, obviously you're going to do some construction there, asphalt's going to be torn up, so they wanted to make sure that the asphalt was going to be put back and the striping was going to be done, and that was all on PGE's nickel, and then if there has to be a slurry seal and restriping of the parking lot, then obviously the city would take care of that, like they do the rest of the lot at the same time, correct? Yeah, but the initial installation will all be on PGE. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. And then, then at both meetings, a little bit less than at the first one than last night, was that it's just done in an aesthetically appealing way, you know, right now. The library is really a pride and joy of this community, and, you know, if there's landscaping that's needed or something around that infrastructure, that would be important, I think, to the Library Board. But they were very enthusiastic about it last night, you know, and it just takes some time to get used to these ideas of change, but I think it'll be great. And then I spoke with Delora about enforcement of combustion engine cars parking in those spots, especially when, you know, you want to get over to the water feature and you've got a bunch of kids and bags and everything, and that's the closest spot, but I think the city can deal with that in a, you know, a way that, you know, isn't, you know, with warnings or, you know, without ticketing, we can work that out. Generally speaking, people are pretty polite here. I can't see that being a big issue. You know, at other places, Fred Meyers, other stores, Walgreens, you just don't see people parking in those spots, even when it's busy. So I think this is great to be doing it, especially for a person who has electric cars. And the other thing about, you know, location is, I think it's going to be a great draw for people into our city to use our businesses and see our library and see our parks and everything as they go down I-5 and say, yeah, I'm not going to make it quite to Beaver Ten, I can charge up really quickly, there's the spot. So I'm assuming it'll be on their nav systems that it's a location.
Correct.
That's right.
That pops up. That's great.
And I just want to speak to one, you know, you said aesthetically pleasing, and then that's the design that we work with, we, you know, with the city to make sure everyone's on board with where equipment is set and, you know, that sort of thing, so we want it to look good as well.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a pull, yeah.
Councilor Rockwell?
I wondered, and you kind of talked about, you know, as the use increases, that you may reassess the monthly price. I wonder if you have a projection of the other rates, how often you may be looking at the rates, or what the process would be for setting those rates in the future?
Excellent question. So as an electric utility company, these rates are actually in a tariff that went before the Public Utility Commission and are filed publicly available, and so just like we would charge a residential electricity rate, these are created and filed in a similar process. And so as we adjust these rates, it is a public process, it is a process that is regulated by the Utility Commission, and then will, is filed as a tariff. And so I think the good news there is there's a lot of opportunity for us to collaborate with stakeholders and make sure these changes make sense for the community and make sense for drivers as we do make those adjustments.
Thank you. And then I had one other question in the packet, the license, the charging station license was included as exhibit A, and 4.3 of that under term, it seems to be talking about the termination of the agreement. There was a line that I thought, huh, what does that mean? It said, "PGE shall not be required to remove and may abandon underground equipment, underground cabling, underground conduit associated with charging station," as shown in the, as built. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means, or what we're talking about, or, you know, what that looks like, but I just, I wanted to bring it up, make sure it's on everyone's radar.
Sure, so the intent would be, you know, you have each of the charging stations in between them, there would likely be underground cabling. So what we talked about is, say, at the 11th year, both of us decide we don't want to pursue it any further, they remove everything above ground, but they could abandon the cabling underground, as long as we have as-built drawings to know. So if in the future we were planning to replace that sidewalk or work in that area, then we would know that that cabling was there and it was just dead cabling. It's similar to what we'll do with a water line, so if we put a new water line in, we a lot of times will just abandon the old water line that's next to it, and as long as we know it's there, it's not a problem.
Okay, and so, and if we knew that there was any sort of safety concern with something that was under there, then we'd have all the information to remedy it.
Correct, yes, but at that time, it would be just dead cabling that would be in the ground.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Councilor West?
Another question. So as like, the city of Wilsonville looks to partner with PGE on this, has there been, I guess, we always want to make sure it's utilized, right, that it's just not there and never really accessed, or accessed as much as we'd like to make sure it's successful. So is there any outreach to the people that are most likely using people with electric cars and multi-unit housing? Or do those people generally not already have electric cars because they know that they don't have the infrastructure now to build them, right? So like, why would we reach out if they are already not a population that would generally have this type of vehicle? So is there any type of knowledge, because primarily, I would guess, that Wilsonville residents would be the primary users of this infrastructure initially because we know about it and see it, and you still have to take 30 to 60 minutes out of your busy day to come off the freeway, to hang out at the library for an hour before your car's ready to charge to drive to Salem or whatever. So a lot of that initial usage will be done by Wilsonville residents. Do we know the population and how many electric vehicles that we have here that would be in proximity, that would be willing to say, I'm not going to charge in my home invincible, I'm going to charge at the station at the library?
Yeah, I think, without speaking to exact numbers, we're excited about this location because of its dual use, so we see it as both an asset for the community, for those drivers that are in the community that would like to use it, perhaps the Home Charge Challenge, which is kind of the customer profile that we were trying to address there, but also because of its proximity to I-5. And I do think as electric vehicle adoption rates increase, which are the data and reports that we're reviewing, do show, it's hard to predict the future exactly, but do, you know, are projected to increase, that we believe utilization of this location will warrant construction here. And we do have actually a robust education and outreach program that is kind of another part of the pilot programs that we're doing, and so when this location launches, for example, we'll be having, we'll be working And so when this location launches, for example, we'll be having, we'll be working, should this go through, we'll be working very closely with the city on, on a ribbon cutting event that, that information goes out to the press about, there'll be a ride and drive. So we'll be bringing electric vehicles to the site for customers to try out for the first time. And so we're doing, there, we have a targeted marketing outreach campaign and an event scheduled for every location that comes online. So we're, so we're thinking through those things.
Is there any outreach to the dealerships? Because we have so many of those in the area. And are they excited by this?
They are. We actually have a ride and drive event with Wilsonville next weekend, I believe, on the, and I just, with dealer, it just escaped me. But we've been partnering with them a lot to, to help educate them as another avenue to help adoption.
I think a couple of quick examples there. We had a ride and drive here in Wilsonville during the Oregon Drive Electric Week, I think it was in September. That was, it was very successful. And we also have, I've been working closely with a local dealer, I'm not saying who, but working closely with them to make sure their staff is ready to sell EVs, that they've got, they actually have a computerized display that helps show the available charging infrastructure. So we really view the, the dealers in this community as an asset and it's something that can help promote electric vehicle adoption.
How many electric vehicles are there currently in Oregon operating? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, our, our numbers are a little older this time. I don't have refreshed data for 2018, but I believe is of the end of 2017, it was around 16,000 electric vehicles in the state.
16,000, okay. Governor says she wants 50,000 more vehicles sold, and I assume that means during her current four-year term. Those are going to need a lot more charging stations than six here and six there in order to function. How is that going to work?
Yeah, I think that's, as a utility, we're here to accelerate transportation electrification. That's something we believe in, our, our customers expect from us. But there, there will also be other players in the space in, in the private sector as well that will be developing electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And our hope is that together we see that infrastructure grow. One example would be Electrify America, who is building out a national electric vehicle charging network with high-powered stations. They've got four in the works in the Portland metro area. They're also expanding along I-5 and I-84. So my, my short answer is it's, it's happening, it's beginning to happen.
But you're expecting private sector to be a significant player in that?
Potentially. Potentially. I mean, Electrify America is, is, has a tiny bit of history. They are a subsidiary of Volkswagen, created using, out of the settlement with the federal rural government over diesel emissions issues. They had, they have $2 billion to spend on electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Portland was identified as one of the first 17 cities for them to invest in. So they're serious and they're, they appear to be serious in being active in that space. So that's encouraging.
All right. So your comparison to gas stations, fueling stations, you know, without the private sector active in the oil industry, we would never have gas stations everywhere the same way that we now expect them to be ubiquitous wherever we need them, right? So thinking about having electric charging stations on that level, it seems improbable that PGE is going to build all of those. And there's going to have to be some other mechanism that, that works to expand that. The other question that I had in looking at the terms of this is when you drive into a gas station, you expect that they are going to be responsible for fueling your vehicle safely. Paragraph 1.6 in your agreement says, "PGE, the owner and their representative, respective representatives make no representation or warranties or, and assume no liability regarding the quality, safety, design, sizing, installation, construction, reliability, functionality, efficiency, performance, operation, maintenance, or use or other aspect of any charging station." PG is saying that we're just not responsible for anything. I mean, we're just not willing to be responsible for anything. Why is that? And if it's as safe as it's portrayed at, then why is it a worry to not be charged, not be responsible for anything? And then who is? I mean, if someone gets hurt from high voltages, there's going to be legal actions of some kind. You know, what is the history so far? And, and what should, how should we be thinking about this?
Yeah. Good question. I will, I'll leave it to our, to the, to the, the city attorney and our attorneys at PGE, and if you can bring those questions back. I can't speak to the, the exact legal language of this document. I can't represent PGE in that fashion tonight. But it's important to me that we take these questions and concerns and make sure that our, our legal staff and your legal staff are able to review them. Your question about history, so there's about 2,600 of these sites installed throughout the U.S. There's about 116 here in Oregon. PGE has owned and operated nine of these stations for the last three or four years in the public. For the PGE-owned stations, I'm not aware of any personal injury from them. So I hope that provides some of the background you requested. And I, I know that our, our legal teams worked to create this agreement and I'm happy to bring back any, any concerns and make sure those are addressed.
Well, my understanding is that PG is pretty firm that this is how it's going to be if they're going to put it in. If I understand, they're not saying, well, we might negotiate that. They're saying, you know, no, we're not going to be responsible for it, you know? And I find that to be something that gives me a little bit of pause. I'm not aware of accident issues either, but then I don't follow this every day. If there's going to be 50,000 vehicles in the state in the next few years, there obviously are going to be an awful lot of charging stations, both in home installs probably and in, in other sites. So I'm just trying to think about how PGE envisions this whole dynamic working. And if it's just, hey, you know, we're not going to be responsible for anything, but if you want to charge your car, go at it, you know? If I hire an electrician to come put something in my house, I expect him to be responsible for the quality of the installation, the safety, the compliance with standards, all that sort of thing. If he came to me and said, yeah, I'd be happy to wire your house, but hey, you know, if anything happens, I'm not going to be responsible for it, I would say, maybe that's not the guy. I mean, it's an interesting dynamic to me where we are in this history and, and how, I'm curious how PGE sees this responsibility question.
Yeah, that, that's something we take seriously. And I, I think the best way for us to respond to that is we can provide, we can have a meeting between ourselves and the respective legal counsel and make sure you're there represented and these questions are answered when we, we take those issues and concerns seriously.
Does our attorney or city manager have any comment that we should hear?
No, not to anything that's probably going to make you happy. We had the same concerns internally as staff. And so I think it's just one of those things where, you know, everybody can say that they're not liable, but the reality is if something happens, everybody's getting sued equally, right? People that manufacture the equipment, PGE because they're a partner and the city as well. So I think we all go into this with our eyes wide open. Everybody's trying to limit their risk to the greatest extent possible, but the reality is we're all in it together. That's the way I see it. And it's, it's, to me, it's a business decision that if you want this amenity in your community, you have to assume that people that are making the equipment are doing it with the eye to not get sued.
Yeah.
Everybody's trying to do the right thing here. So I don't know. It really is one of those things where you have to just say as a counsel that, you know, that's an acceptable risk.
So I can speak to that too. I had, I had long discussions with the legal counsel and the management team at PGE about that language because I found it odd and overreaching, but we were, but I was told that that language had to stay in the agreement. It was in all of the agreements. And so then it was passed on as a business call. So staff deemed it to be a reasonable risk to assume, but that's obviously up to you. But PGE, if we go back, I mean, you can tell us to go back tonight and then maybe they would change their mind and do something differently, but it did not appear to be that way.
I don't think they're going to change their mind.
They had lengthy conversations with both Lynn and Delora. And so, so yes, it's, it's language that I don't like to see, but, but the call is if that's the language you have to accept to have the charging station here, then it is a business call.
Our liability is going to be around the grounds. So if there's like a pothole or something and somebody steps out and twists their ankle, that's going to be on us. We assume that risk for every facility that we own today.
So the...
I don't think we're going to be assuming risk for electrical charging stations. I mean, somebody could sue us, I'm sure, but we're not going to accept the risk for something that, you know, the city's not an expert on, you know, polarity and...
But the installer says they're not going to either, yeah.
Well, but the people that manufacture the equipment are on them. What I hear PGE saying in this language is that this is on the people that make the equipment, it's not on PGE. Is that a fair assessment?
It is. It's difficult for us to guarantee because we didn't manufacture the equipment. What we did do, you know, we take safety very seriously at PGE. So when we vetted the manufacturers in this case, you know, we made sure they were certified and all appropriate listings. Joe and I personally have gone down multiple times to see their equipment to verify that they're following all, you know, safety standards while installing and another equipment. And this was a question that we, we vetted with the steering committee that helped us choose this manufacturer as well and pushed them really hard on where there are any instances in their past or currently, and they didn't have any. So we felt this is the safest equipment we could purchase at the time.
That would have been the question I would have is that, did you vet this manufacturer? And are you aware of any instances from equipment that they've manufactured and installed of any accidents or injuries to humans?
That was part of our, our process with, with vetting. It took us about five months to come to a conclusion that this was the best manufacturer. And multiple times we've asked them and there have been no instances that they, they are able to report.
I am aware of not necessarily this manufacturer, that there has been some issues with equipment, damage to people's vehicles, but that's pretty rare too.
It is rare. And in a couple of those instances, we, you know, sometimes it is user error, you know, just not flicking things in the right way.
It's usually always user error.
But again, you know, we, when we sent out our fee and we got, you know, 15 responses back and we vetted all of them in depth to, to ensure that we were getting safe equipment. That was, that was a key criteria for us.
We did propose a "use at your own risk" sign, but PGE wasn't fond of that because they said it would discourage use. So they didn't want to agree to that. We did have language posted that does clearly state that this is PGE equipment and if there are any issues, contact PGE. And that language was agreed to. So that's just kind of the history on the negotiations.
And then from the legal standpoint, this being a new technology and potentially a new exposure, does our city insurance wording adequately cover the city even though it's a new technology that probably wasn't there when our insurance wording was drafted?
I'm sure it does because it'll, it basically ensures anything that we've authorized, but we can check with CCIS. I can have Ms. Trowhawk call them tomorrow and say, are there any other issues we need to be aware of? We can do that.
Yeah.
You know, pretty short order.
Yeah, okay.
She's sitting right back there, so I'm sure she's taking good notes.
I guess this is a question for Barbara. So hypothetically, PGE installs these units. The installer makes a human error from, and it's not the equipment. Is then PGE not liable for the installation error if what would really deter somebody from using is if they were electrocuted, not assigned, right? That would really deter somebody. So is that potentially like what we're talking about where people make errors even installation, no matter how good the intentions? Is that what, is that right?
Well, their disclaimer is very broad, but that disclaimer is as between the city and PGE. Now, if they make an error and some person is injured or blows up, then I don't think that disclaimer is going to preclude that person from suing PGE or from suing us, even though we post a sign that says this isn't ours. Now, it may give us a good defense, but I don't, I don't think a disclaimer in a contract between us and PGE, when there isn't that sign posted, "Use at your own risk," then I, I think that there's still potential for liability there for, for somebody who are a claim for somebody that's hurt.
And they were resistant against having a sign, "Use at your own risk." I mean, public pools have that and they're always full of people anyways, right? Like, I think that's kind of our life, but like people make that decision independently every single time they go to use any public facility, use your own risk, no lifeguard on duty is an example. In our, in our neighborhood pool, it's packed every summer with kids still splashing around and they know there's a risk, but they've been informed. Are they totally resistant against something like that?
Well, we proposed it and they took it out, so yes.
Is your perception of the charger technology itself, one that, that the stations are evolving fairly quickly? I mean, in, in 10 years at the life of this, is the charger that's being built going to be something completely different than what we're getting today?
It's an interesting question. You know, from just our experience in the industry, we have seen the equipment change over the last three to five years. And we know that vehicle technology is changing. Our intent in selecting this particular style of equipment is that it could be upgraded and remain useful for that 10-year period. I can't say with certainty what will, what will happen in the future, but we've attempted to, to address that in the equipment selected.
That is a concern because you have something on day one that's an asset and then three years from now, that technology is no longer feasible and people are getting charges in two minutes instead of 30. Do you have the right, do you have the ability to retrofit the existing equipment to make sure you're keeping up with? And you're saying this company is leading edge in terms of that?
Yeah. And this is actually a useful slide for this. You'll see to the right, it says there's one conversion tower. And so we're in the first, the phase one of this site, we'll only be installing one piece of supporting equipment that will power the site. But we're, we're creating spots for three future pieces of equipment that can actually up, increase the speed at which energy is delivered to the vehicles. And so we've not only selected equipment, but designed our site to accommodate future upgrades.
So this is on our agenda tonight, Resolution 2721, and we'll deal with that in the meeting. If people have perspectives they want to offer at that time, keeping in mind there's probably more public exposure for the formal meeting than for the work session here, then that would be the time to talk about it. But we are being asked to, to respond to that resolution tonight as things stand. Is there anything else you would like us to know? We've kind of put you through a series of probing questions here.
We, we really appreciate everyone's time and we're, we remain excited about this potential location.
I, I am an automotive aficionado in some ways. I have read that there are more than 50 different electric vehicle models currently under development by auto manufacturers now, not sometime in the future, they're now under development that are expected to be introduced within the next three to four years.
The choices have to have grown. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
About 50 years too late.
Okay. If we can make the microphones pay...
Yeah, we have some feedback.
I don't know how to respond what it is, but. Dialer rights steering committee. Please go ahead. Introduce yourselves for the record.
Yeah, my name is Eric Loomis. I'm the Transit Operations Manager at SMART. And with me tonight I have Kate Johnson, the Chair of our Dialer Rights Steering Committee, and Josh Goldston, the Vice Chair of our Dialer Rights Steering Committee. So in a minute, I'll turn it over to them to explain what the committee is going to be doing for SMART. But before that, I'll just give a brief background of why we decided to form this committee. So first off, transit at SMART, we have two separate modes of transportation. One is... fixed route, and one is demand response, which is our dial ride, what we call it. So we do a lot of focusing on the fixed route side of things, because that is about 70% of our operations and our budget. But tonight, and with this committee, we really want to focus on the dial ride portion of, of our transportation modes. So in the packet, I believe there's a handout of, it's a table of the different programs we have for dial ride. There's five different programs in, in that, yeah, in demand response. One of those programs, our ADA paratransit, that's required for us to operate from the federal government. It's Americans with Disabilities Act. It's the one program, if we have fixed route, we have to operate that program. The others' programs are optional at the federal level. However, the city, and throughout the years of Smart, have seen a need for these programs, be it because fixed route can't serve certain parts, neighborhoods of town, or different demographics of people in town. And so what we're looking at is the steering committee to decide how efficient these programs are running. We hear from our customers how great these programs are for the most part, but, you know, that we have a, a small customer base compared to the greater city. So we really want this to expand, to hear comments from the, more of the community. Some of the programs are reaching capacity, so we want to be proactive in seeing how we can run efficiently with the same, under the same budget without increasing that budget. So that's one thing we, as staff, would like to have the steering committee look at. And then, also, demand response systems. Dial Ride is more expensive than fixed route. If you look at the cost per passenger, you have fewer people on the bus than you do on a fixed route system. So the other piece to that is how do we market to our customers to have fixed route be a better option, more viable option than our demand response, while still having demand response as an option for those that really truly need it. So part of the process, the selection process, we had, we wanted people from different backgrounds to serve on this committee, so we had an application process. We reached out to different areas in town, different housings, and we, I think we, we did a good job with getting several applications back. We got about 12 applications back, and nearly accepted all of those into the committee. And what we want the committee to do is really take this, lead this, lead this, this report, and staff is just going to be there to help facilitate and, you know, answer any questions and kind of guide them. But really, we want this steering committee to take the reins on this. So with that, I will turn it over to Josh to speak a little bit more about the committee.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I just want to apologize in advance. I'm starting to lose my voice, so I'm going to keep this pretty brief. But kind of want to let you know a little bit about the cross-section of the stakeholder group that's come together to create this committee. People from business owners and activists within the community, as well as people that are actually users. And so we've taken, and we're, we're taking those, all those cross-sections and trying to get a good understanding and different ideas and viewpoints. There's 12 total members, as Eric just mentioned. We started meeting in November, on the 5th. We're going to have 10 consecutive meetings with the hopes that we'll have some, some good recommendations. If, if individuals or yourselves, councilors and mayor are interested in any of the information or meeting minutes, that can be found on the Ride Smart website. If you, I won't read it out to you, I think you probably got it in your notes, but basically, there's a Dial Ride Steering Committee link on there that allows you to see kind of what we're talking about, what we're working on. I took a look around to see if any of our counterparts had come in tonight, but it doesn't look like it, so I was hoping to be able to introduce a few of those people to you, but rewarding work, and I'm appreciative that, that I can be a part of it, and look forward to benefiting the community with it. Pass on to Kate.
Hi, Council. My name's Kate Johnson. Happy to be here, and I just, my focus was just getting engaged with the, the community itself, just alongside, you know, what's the committee looking to do? And my, my biggest purpose was to kind of get a really good cross-section of engagement, because oftentimes, as we all know, it's hard to get volunteers, conversation going, how is the service going? So what are the issues? Is there more community involvement and maybe taking surveys? So we talked about internal surveys coming from Wilsonville, not just one, maybe two, it all depends. And knowing full well that this is an ever-changing conversation, this year, next year is very different from five years from now. We recognize that. We do also know that there's a pilot program going on over in Charbonneau that I believe is going well. But how can we serve more people more efficiently and maximize our efforts? And that's what the task force is focused on. So we're pretty excited with our, the involvement so far.
So your plan is to ultimately come up with one or more recommended alternatives out of the work of the task force? Is that-
Yeah, so we're, we want them to come up with alternatives to what our current system looks like, bring that to the public for some surveying, and really, out of that, preferably to bring one of those alternatives, maybe two, maybe a couple back to council in the fall-
Okay.
In the final report form.
The dial ride is interesting, where, if I understand, federally mandated to provide that service, is that right?
The one program out of the five we, we operate, yeah.
Yeah. The, there's kind of a dual mission, in my perception, you know, provide a service to people that cannot get on to, get to where they need to go on regular service, you know, regularly. At the same time, we don't want everybody riding dial ride that could be using the other service. So you're trying to encourage it, and we're trying to not be overly accommodating to people that don't really need it at the same time. So it's kind of both ways. Obviously, it's a very expensive service to run, especially when we go out of town. We had discussion at the time the master plan was being worked on, I think by Mr. Beshear's predecessor, about trying to consolidate out-of-town trips, especially medical trips to, to medical facilities that are not in Wilsonville, and thereby defray the cost of individual people making those long trips. Have we worked on that, or is that part of this discussion that will happen in this review, or?
Yeah, that, that's the program that they're really going to look at closely. If you look at the bottom of that table, the cost per ride, that one is by far the highest, the outlier, and we want them to really look at that program, all the programs, but especially that one, to see what we can do to make it more efficient.
Okay. Questions? Counselor Ackbar.
I kind of had some questions, which we've already discussed, really, about the overlap between the fixed routes and dial ride and those populations, what the overlap of the populations are. And thinking about, okay, this is a dial ride service, maybe a segment of fixed right, fixed route population that needs to access somewhere that's outside of the normal routes, right? And then, I started thinking that with the dial ride, this, you know, this chart shows that a lot of the services you book in advance. So I would imagine that maybe there's historical data on, from point A to point B at these sorts of times, and I'm wondering if that historical data is going to be mined and presented to the committee as part of this process, in looking at what are some of the patterns that, that we're seeing from dial ride, and, you know, how can we use that information when we're looking at adapting kind of our process in the future?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we have all that data. We haven't presented that yet through, through the 10-month process. We definitely will. A great example of that is for our out-of-town medical, most of, most of our trips, majority of our trips go to a legacy Meridian Medical Center, whereas, you know, staff has some ideas, you know, we'll pass along, and obviously have the committee think of, of different ways to make it more efficient, whereas right now, we just, you know, one, two, two people on a trip. What we've talked about is a medical shuttle type, where you get five or 10 people on a trip to the specific, medical facility on a specific day. So then our customers know when they can schedule, to, to try and, and make it reasonable for them and not cut back on service, so.
Yep. Great.
The cross-section of stakeholders or interested parties, I think, on the committee is very commendable. You've got a great, you know, range of different experienced people, so I hope that will enrich in the dialogue and help people see other people's viewpoints as, try to grapple with that. So I think you're on a great track. Look forward to seeing what kind of results you get. Counselor what?
I've had long conversations with Dwight about this topic, super passionate about it, have vocalized that often. Has there been any discussion or planning around partnering the private sector? Some of these costs are just so cost prohibitive, right? Like, the number one thing that keeps coming to mind over and over again is access to healthcare, access to healthcare, and people being isolated. And often, I find in my own profession that people that are over the age of 55, even older than that, have difficulty sometimes even asking for help and don't want to become a burden, and they don't always, and so it's hard to make sure that we're making sure they have access to healthcare that's essential, and which I think is important, because before you know it, they aren't getting access to healthcare, and then chronic disease processes expand and expand. So partnering with somebody like Uber, Lyft to bring down those costs, is that even feasible, looking into something like that, to say, instead of it being $25 a trip and partially subsidized by the city based on need? Or is there, is that even a question being brought up?
It has been several times. There are larger cities that do it, or have talked about doing it. A, a big barrier to that is, even with taxi service, Uber, Lyft, anything like that, once they start getting subsidized money from us, from the federal government, they enter a drug testing pool and other strict guidelines that FTA puts down that will have to be put in a contract, and it's very difficult to get those private entities involved in that. So, so that's something we've seen in other cities that have had issues. So it's been talked about. We haven't gone into detail with the committee at this time, or, you know, internally with our staff about those things yet. Medicaid, they offer some different types of transportation. We've seen what they've done, but we haven't really reached out and had a strong partnership with those types of transportation options.
I just wanted to point out that I think what, what you bring up is, is true, and I'm passionate about it as well, and I think communication's going to be huge for this dial ride as well, because a lot of the folks, he would say, that, that aren't as comfortable with dial a ride, onesies and twosies, though, you know, people want to ride single instead of with multiple people. There's, there's uncomfortableness about it. So things like the pilot program going on in Charbonneau, I think is excellent to create an atmosphere of coffee training, coffee and training, and, you know, just let's meet and greet and talk about it. So there's all these changes, right, all the time, and things moving. So I think communication's going to be huge about how we move forward and maximize and make it efficient, and kind of embrace different types of people who are comfortable or not comfortable. And I don't know if you wanted to speak to that, too, because some of those-
I mean, yeah, just, just as far as the transition between, the mix between dial ride and fixed route. Villebois, the Villebois Shuttle is a good example of that as well. We used to, we only had dial ride up there. Our numbers were large for capacity. We started a shuttle, and the numbers continued to be, actually, expanded exponentially from there. And that's what we're doing, why we're looking at a medical shuttle to Meridian, because it's the same thing. We have so many rides going there. Why are we doing one or two rides at a time? Why not look at a shuttle to expand that?
Do we not, does Smart and I have a bus stop currently at Meridian?
Uh, no. We, only on the demand response system, not on a fixed route, and that's, a lot of things come into play, being outside of our district and that as well, but it's something we certainly would want to work on. And we, we also have a, a couple grants in to help fund, fund that shuttle if it's possible.
So I, for one, will look forward to our first fully autonomous, driverless, six-passenger electric vehicle that's programmed to go from here to and back, you know. It may be a little while before we get there, but it will happen. Thanks very much.
With 5G.
Thank you.
And we have our last scheduled item here for annual urban renewal report for 1718. That's Roddacher.
Kathy Roddacher, Finance Director. This evening, we have, we are presenting, she's trying to show me in the middle.
There you go.
Sorry. I have good eyesight, really. So tonight, I have just a short presentation on the Urban Renewal Annual Report. It was included in your packet. I do have hard copies. If you would like to add it to your collection, just let me know. Not long ago, we received the Urban Renewals Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that particular report had, has more to do with the financial side of urban renewal. This particular report is a requirement from ORS 457.460, and it includes a little bit more information on the property taxes themselves. So one of the things that the report talks about are assessed values. These are all estimated at fiscal year-end June 30th. We have approximately $485 million in increment of assessed value in our year 2000 plan. The frozen base at the time it was created was $44 million, and we have an incremental growth of $441 million. On our west side, we started out with a $16.5 million frozen assessed value, and it's now up to a total of $623 million. So it had quite a bit of growth in that particular district. And our Coffee Creek is fairly new, but it even has grown about $20,000, uh, $20 million since we established the district.
You didn't put percentages on those, did you?
No, I didn't.
So the first one is 1,000%.
Yeah, yeah.
And the second one, I can't even do in my head.
It's, it's big.
It's really remarkable.
It is pretty, pretty amazing. The report also talks about our maximum indebtedness, and we refer to this as our return on investment. In the year 2000, we have spent a total of eight, $84 million in debt service. We have a maximum indebtedness of $107 million. The remaining of that will be used for funding the Fifth Street extension and the Beckman Dip Bridge. We currently have about $5.5 billion of debt outstanding. We are going to be working with a financial advisor here in the next couple of months to see if we could pay that debt, refinance it, because we want to close the district down sooner than the debt is due. And the west side district, the maximum indebtedness is 49.4 million, of which we have already borrowed 40 million. The $9.4 million remaining will help to fund the Twos Road and the Brown Road. And it's important to note that when we receive tax increment, we have to use it for debt service. We cannot directly use the tax increment to do anything. We have to use it for the debt service payments. So that's why we have these-
And that's why we have to borrow money to make urban renewal work, right? Because the law says you can only use that money to pay off debt service.
Correct. That is correct. So to date, we have not issued any debt for our Coffee Creek plan. We have $67 million in maximum indebtedness. A couple of meetings ago, we brought information about a loan through Business Oregon to kick off the Garden Acres Road project. The day before the application was due, they called us and told us they had to increase the interest rate by 1%, and that they were also going to require a debt service reserve, even though the loan is backed by the full faith and credit of the city. We did go ahead and-
It's just a cautionary tale about state program that starts off with great intentions, and then they just rule it to death. This is the step under the federal government. Sorry. It still hurts. It still hurts.
So we did go ahead and submit our application, but unfortunately, a couple of the forms were not what they were expecting, so we, it's been pushed back to April. But in the meantime, I did reach out to our contact at Columbia Bank, who's helped us with a couple of different fundings. She was able to offer us a $3.6 million- She was able to offer us a $3.6 million, a $3.6 interest loan for a 10-year period with no prepayment penalties, since it's the full faith and credit of the city. We don't have to do any kind of debt service requirement. So we are meeting with her on Monday to get, you know, the full story, and then we'll be coming back to council with our recommendation. But, you know, 3.6 versus 5%, that kind of makes a little bit of a difference, especially for a new fund that is just trying to get started, and the increment isn't as big as some of the other ones. And the last slide I have, I thought this was kind of an, this is the first time I have prepared the urban renewal report, so I thought this was an interesting table. It's on page four, and it talks about how the taxes that are collected are distributed. And as we know with our year 2000, we put a cap of $4.2 million on the taxes that we levy, and that's been for many years. At this point, what that results in is about $1.5 million in tax increment is going back to the overlapping districts. So that would be the schools and the county and the 4-H extension, and the city.
And we've had these conversations with our partners in the past in terms of what's in it for us.
Yeah.
And we've been very responsible in terms of returning value, as much value as we can, as soon as we can, to our overlapping taxing districts.
And this is one way that we are able to accomplish that. It's even bigger on the west side. We have now met the $5 million cap in, in taxes levied, so anything over that goes back to the districts, I mean, to the overlapping districts, and right now, that's at $2.6 million. And of course, Coffee Creek just happened to have a little $5 million. I'm not quite sure what happened on that one, but that was just underleveying more than having met any limitations or anything. Anyway, that's, like I said, it was just a really short presentation, but kind of a good recap.
Did you want to touch on the TIF zones, just to prove that some urban renewal districts actually do die?
Yes, we started out with six, and we're down to three.
Yes. And that was, I think, written to the enabling ordinance that if they weren't used within a certain amount of time, they would go bye-bye.
Right. And we did extend the, the life of the three until we can figure out this year what we wanted to do.
And those were set up to mimic enterprise zones, which the city can avail itself, but Portland and Hillsborough and similar areas can, and that was more for your benefit.
Yeah, so that's an interesting history, and even though no private user has stepped up and qualified for the urban renewal benefits in those districts, that it did create a fair amount of interest and inquiries, created inquiries from across the, the private sector, especially at a time when we had a very large vacancy rate in our city, where our industrial vacancy rate was up around 40% of our, of our square footage.
I think another important point to make about that program is that that was a task force-driven idea. It was a, a lot of stakeholders, the business industry, citizenry, you know...
Overlapping taxing district.
And overlapping, yeah, exactly, who, who came to the council with that idea.
Said, let's try, you know, they would try.
And they set it up to be very special, in terms of not just the number of jobs, but the amount of investment, and then how much those jobs paid, and I suspect that's...
And so maybe those thresholds were higher than the market could meet with.
I think Jordan would agree, that we had inquiries that a lot of companies just can't meet the investment threshold, or they can't meet the income threshold.
Yeah. So we might do a little different another time, but we have this experience, you know, and hopefully we won't be in another scenario anytime soon when we've got 40% vacancy in our...
And we have talked about taking those requirements back to the task force at some point in the future, and just see if, you know, those are still in play.
Yeah, yeah. Questions? Anybody? Counselor Leahham?
Not on this.
Okay. Not on this. All right, Kathy, thanks very much. Counselor Leahham?
Yeah, I, I came, I came up with some other counselor concerns that I've forgotten about, forgotten before. One is, I saw your letter to the person who raised health concerns about the 5G.
About 5G, yeah, I felt it's important to, to respond.
I thought, I thought that was a good response, but I had not heard of this before, so...
She emailed me, and I responded also, that same concern.
I, I mean, I just, I'm just asking, what are the health issues? That's the first I've heard of.
I would say there are health concerns, but those concerns have been, the FCC has not given them any validation.
So I can speak a little bit to that, too, because I've got a copy of the mayor's response, and I was actually going to talk about it, you know, the second reading, that we did get that email in, because usually you ask, have we heard from anybody? And so that's what I would say. So that is a concern. It's the same kind of, it's the same sort of issue you deal with, with cell phones, and should you have them up to your head, or... And so actually, somebody from the Public Utilities Commission just called me yesterday to talk a little bit about our, our, our 5G design standards and so on and so forth, and to tell me a little bit about what they were doing. And I asked him about the health concerns. He said, yes, that's an unknown. They're studying it. He, his comment was, in the industry, they say there's nothing more than the cell phones themselves, and it's, and the signal, the way the signal direction points is up high enough that it should go over, you know, areas of concern of going into people's houses or windows or things like that. But it's definitely an area that is still under exploration and hasn't been explored very well, and as I think we talked about last time, 5G doesn't even exist yet. What they're doing is getting ready for 5G when the technology is invented, and what they're getting, what they're going to be doing in the meantime is using these facilities to fill in the gaps for 4G in places where coverage isn't, isn't very good.
I think that was in that, one of those articles I sent you after the council meeting, that Denver had some issues with AT&amp;T selling 5G network, it's not really 5G.
And I think that article also talked about health concerns.
There was like three, I think one of them dealt with health concerns.
Yeah, we, we really don't even have a consensus about microwaves yet, after all these years, let alone about, you know, living near high-tension power lines and, you know, it...
Well, it is a different technology.
It is different.
Yet this is why it has to be so close.
Yeah. Different wavelength.
It's much more different, it's a more powerful but shorter-lasting wavelength, so I can see where, in theory, there would be, there would be a whole different set of issues, but I just had, had heard about them before.
Yeah, and part of the reason nobody knows much is because it isn't finished, it just hasn't been fully invented yet.
We need to put a bunch of rats in a thing and shoot them with 5G.
I wonder if they've tried that.
Science Fair project waiting to happen.
What are you doing for your science fair?
Okay, then I, I had one other question, or one other concern, and that was the Camby Ferry. I didn't, I didn't have a chance to go to the open housey thing they were doing, but we must have had someone there.
It looks like we did.
Some staff people there.
Patty Nelson.
And what was the...
City engineer.
Hi, Patty Nelson, City Engineer. I did attend the meeting, just for informational purposes. It was well-attended. There was, I'm estimating 200 people there. I didn't hear any voices of support, a lot of...
For the bridge.
For the, for the bridge.
Right.
Lots of support for either the ferry or even terminating the ferry. I heard some people saying, you know, stopping it altogether. That was one of the options. I left before all the testimony, because it was going to take a while, but that was my take, and I think it's being, I, I passed on some notes, I can't recall, but it's going to the county board in February, and then they'll have another meeting. I'm sure it'll be well-attended as well, so...
So do, do they have an engineering company that is looking at the issue, has done...
They, they had their consultant there. They did a traffic study. They presented that at the meeting, and again, I can, we can share our notes with you if you'd like them. I brought all the copies.
You can tag them up and send them up to me, and I can forward them up.
It's already done, it's just not in your, you know...
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And I can forward to council.
But we can forward it on, but, yeah, they had a consultant there, they did a traffic study.
And how would they do a traffic study?
They have models that they can run that simulate where traffic patterns will go. They simulated what the impacts of the tolls would be, so the idea is to have a toll to pay for the bridge. They ran a model that said that there's a sweet spot, you know, if they have a toll at a certain rate, that the traffic impacts will be controlled.
And where, and where would it go?
Where would the traffic go?
Yeah.
Mountain Road was a big, a big route.
Concern.
And the county, the question came up is, could it support it? And the county indicated that they had, they identified no additional needs on any additional roads to handle the additional traffic, so...
And, and so, I mean, my concern from our standpoint is Advance, and, and whether it sends more traffic onto Advance and, and then...
And they looked at that road as well.
That's a tough road to drive.
Well, I know, but that's how you get to the Camby Ferry now.
So that was one of the roads that was part of the study, and so I'll forward it on. They have tables in there that show what their projections are on the, on the different roads.
Yeah. I mean, because right now, it doesn't have much traffic because of the difficult approaches on both sides of the river and a long, slow trip on the ferry. But, but if it was a bridge, and it, and you did not have those up-down switchback things, I could see where it would be carrying more traffic.
And I think your concerns were well-echoed by a very educated audience who very well articulated many, yes.
Well, I figured the McMansion land out there would not, would, would put a kibosh on it.
Is that a place?
But, but I think Wilsonville's interest is additional traffic, especially truck traffic, coming down Advance or trying to get over to I-5 on Wilsonville Road.
And truck traffic was a question that came up, and I think their traffic engineer or consultant felt like it wouldn't be used for trucks.
Well, it isn't now, because there's switchback things. You have to go up, down, up, down. But if it was a straight road...
I hear you. I'll pass along the information.
That didn't have to go on the Boone Bridge. It could be an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, really dangerous.
Okay, anything else? Why don't we call it a wrap then?
Can I offer you up some free tickets to the Portland Home Remodeling Show? Does anybody want to go?
No.
I'll just leave mine on the front.
I went last year.
They have a $4 value. How many would you like? Because it doesn't sound like there's going to be a huge demand. Would you like to take four friends? Four tickets total? All right. You want to take your daughter to a home remodeling show?
Home remodeling show?
Charlotte?
It's this weekend.
You do a little bit of it.
I went to it last year. That's a bad one.
Is this a bad show?
Let me just say.
Here, let's take it off.
Yes. Yes, it was.
Charlotte, it was great.
That was not a great endorsement. Give the tickets back.
This opinion does not recommend, reflect the opinion of the management. No, yeah.
Is it at the, is it at the Expo?
It's the Veterans Memorial Coliseum.
Oh, I'm good.
It's not the Holman Gardens.
Yeah, the Holman Gardens show's great, but, yeah.
The Out at Expo, or the one they have at Metro, whatever you call it.
Resounding endorsement from the Wilsonville Council.
All right, let's call this a wrap at 6:40, if we could, and we'll meet downstairs in 20 minutes.